All our work session February 6, 2018 to order. Please silence or shut off your cell phones and join us in the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. We have additions, a little bit different format on our agenda. If you see additions are listed and then they're also in red. Thank you Melanie. So the additions are, now let me go ahead.
Opportunity zones, amendment number one, public health minutes, and computer purchases.
Alright, thank you. Is there any other additions or additions at this time? There being none. So, Mr. Berman, you're the first one. Facilities and property.
Facilities and property. I'm here today, invited Lake Aviation Chair Tom Julie and Josh, and they're going on their fifth year here serving Lake County. And just want to kind of, how am I going to say that? Thank you for what you guys have done here and then the commissioners are going to hit on it a little bit more on the appreciation we've had with Lake County Aviation. So Commissioner Shown will be kind of hitting on this, so.
Yes, thank you Dave, that was well said. The appreciation, while this is a small token, there's a large appreciation for all three of you, Tom Julie and Josh. The five years has went and whizzed by.
Yes.
But where the proof is in the pudding of the being five years is all of the things that have been done out at that airport. From major reconstruction projects through the Connect program to just things that most people don't see that you all have done within the hangar, the grounds, the connections that you've established across the state for the businesses to benefit here in Lake County and specifically here in Lake. The professionalism, the knowledge that people can fly in here and anything that they need, it's a one-stop shopping. We owe you a tremendous bed of gratitude. This is, as I said, from Commissioner Winters and I are from the board. This is a small token of our appreciation. I would like to reference back to five years ago when Commissioner Winters and Commissioner Kessler and myself set before the advisory board and had a recommendation about some folks we knew nothing about and it was quite a change to what we were used to. And I have to applaud that advisory board, Jules Kilpatrick, Bruce Webb and Lissa Webb and Bert Young and many others for their staunch support of you folks to come here for us to hire you and it was one of the better decisions that we were able to make and we look forward to a long, long relationship with Lake County Aviation. And I'll just go ahead, if you don't mind at this time, and read this. This is certificate of appreciation presented on February 6, 2018 to Lake County Aviation Tom Andrews, Julie Andrews and Josh Andrews for your excellent service to the Lake County citizens throughout Lake County Airport Operations. And it's signed by all three commissioners, so.
No, I need to speak a little bit.
You came without Brad.
Yeah. Unbelievable where we're at today, five years later, guys. Thank you so much. It's not just one job out there, I look at it as a family operation, but it's three jobs in Lake County out there. Whenever I was able to attend and watch the helicopter come in that you guys completely rebuilt from the ground up, a million dollar project, I believe you could probably say more, but into Lake County. Two mechanics here that we have in Lake County for people build, come in and have their airplane serviced and the annuals done and all that. We always are asked to try to bring businesses, try to bring jobs to Lake County. One job here is equal to a hundred or three hundred, whatever that is. And so we went five years from one to three, the way I look at it, plus the spin-off that it helps our whole community. Whenever the crew was here painting that helicopter, I think they was here for three months, staying in hotels, eating in our restaurants. And that's just one little thing that you guys do. Whenever there's the fires, you guys are working your butts off out there trying to make sure that those seat planes and helicopters are operational and they keep going. Thank you for that too because that reaches right out to our forest health and saving our private lands and our forest lands up there. The grounds and everything that you guys don't give enough thanks for, that you just get the work done, you do your day job all day long and then you go in and work on the hangar, you work on the pilots lounge, the restrooms and right on down as we're piecemealing out trying to fix something that is 1940's building and the facilities. Thank you guys for that, you don't get near enough thanks. We don't spend enough time going out there and seeing that, but we hear from some folks and other people, so. Thank you guys so much. I can talk, we can talk for hours. If we come in five years, just thank you guys so much and we feel like you guys need to do that.
So we could have talked forever, but I was told I wasn't supposed to, so. Well, I really appreciate what Commissioner Winters said, you can tattoo and ditto me on all of that, that was great. Ginger's got a comment, I think.
Yeah, I just want to say they have a great tourist attraction out there. I'm absolutely in love with their saltwater aquarium. I don't know if any of you have had the pleasure, that is probably, that is really a class act and they've had it for a while and they've grown all these wonderful corals and it's pretty amazing. I mean, it's like a school field trip when you go and see that. It's pretty cool.
And the one thing we never said enough about is the Connect Oregon Dollars and being a part of that and where our facility's at today as far as the painting and the preservation and all the things out there, the hangars and everything that you guys work on all the time, all of that, to being a part of that, working in FAA, we just go on forever. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh boy, man.
Oh, I'm laughing.
So, at this time we'd like to present you with this to Commissioner Winters and I, and come around and Dave. All three of you please.
Mind if I get a quick picture of this?
That we're county members.
I guess that's the point.
Go ahead folks.
Come on, don't be shy, I don't bite. It's not a principle of office, this is sick.
Yeah. All three of you.
Where's your holder bill there?
There you go. Alright, three, two, one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You really do. Thank you. So did you have something to say?
No, I just want to say we couldn't do it without the help of, I mean, you and Brad, Dave and Ann, everybody, it's a team effort to get what we get done out there, so, you know, same thing, we want to show our appreciation for all the support because we've been thankful to have the county support on all of this stuff, couldn't have done it all without it.
For the record, you have a hundred percent of our support, always.
Thanks.
Yes.
So Dave, there's one more thing, you have one more thing. So, this time we'd like to also acknowledge Mr. Berman for his time with the airport. I think Tom, Julie and Josh might have a little bit to say about how well you are to work with, your play-in on the Connect Oregon and how much you do to help work with them so our airport stays functional and stays going all the time. You know my part in the Connect Oregon, it's got to get to us as the Air Flight Committee on Transportation before we can push down, that takes good presentation by you and Tom there to the mode. You guys have been successful, successful two times for the Connect Oregon if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken, three times now for the airport. How many million dollars is that?
Five point six, almost five point six.
Five point six million dollars, Dave, Tom and Melanie, you guys have been able to do. So with that, we want to recognize you also Dave for your teamwork and that's what it takes as a team for you guys to be successful out there. All my years I've never seen that many dollars built to come in and be put in the right place to build and enhance and make our airport what it needs to be. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Kessler, Commissioner Shown as liaison, because I know you guys work together. Anyways, here's the certificate of appreciation, I think Dan's going to want to say something about it all, thank you guys, thank you Dave.
Thank you Dave. Well, I think Commissioner Kessler.
That was intentional.
Commissioner Winters I think really hit the nail on the head and it's another one of those things, you know, and I can't separate them Dave, the airport from all the other things you've been working, the real one, the facilities and the list kind of goes on, but we're here to end up the airport. And I know that you and Tom and Julie and Josh have a great working relationship and you have a lot of respect for them, they have a lot of respect for you, we have respect for all of you and what you've done. And the proof ends up, as Commissioner Winters said, the proof ends up in what we've not only accomplished with getting dollars, but how we've been creating, you guys, you know, you don't have to involve me much because it's not necessary, but occasionally you'll talk about this little change or that little change that you're doing and you're going to stretch those dollars and do some additional improvements. You both came before us as a budget committee and requested special funding under the budget time hearings and you put that to great use, you know, we spoke earlier about the hangars, the lighting, the doors, the improvements, the lounge, the lounge is kind of second to none for our pilots, all of those things. And it's, I know a group effort and I know you give Tom, Julie and Josh all of the credit, but you are so instrumental from the county's standpoint in making sure all these things not only have happened, but will continue to happen. You guys come in very excited about future hangar opportunities and growth of that airport because you understand how valuable it is to our economic well-being and we just, once again, can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You're welcome.
Yeah, Dave, I really appreciate all the support because you're the one that gets to hear us whine when things don't go right, so, thanks for, thanks for being there, thanks for not hanging up on me, you know.
Yeah.
It's been great with Ann and I, like, said I like working with you guys, it's a good relationship. Well, agree, disagree. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys.
Alright. Move on down our agenda, we have a nine fifteen item, do we have anybody going to call in on that end or anything?
We're going to call Kara Wilbur at her office. So she needs to be available between nine fifteen and nine thirty if you want to move ahead on some other things, we can call her afterwards.
I'd like to recommend it because they're super busy, duties here with us, if we could possibly do it without an amendment.
Absolutely. We'll go to our addition, amendment number one, public health duties.
I know that's kind of, sorry about that, but I think it's okay.
I appreciate it, thank you. So it's my understanding that this amendment is our funds for the current budget period, they're giving us four thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars for this period. And the only other things I saw that were changed were they had, the principal investigator was switched to somebody different. So I would recommend that we approve it as it's presented.
So this is fiscal impact of plus four thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars.
It was like that.
I know, right? My first one.
Yeah.
I don't have to duck or anything.
Okay, and the way we do these duties is we'll take it today and we'll act on it tomorrow. I don't believe duty needs to come back till tomorrow.
I don't think so, no, I think we're good.
Perfect, I appreciate it guys, have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll make sure that's on tomorrow.
So, Ann, I do, we do have a nine thirty time, but I think the audit's coming up pretty fast, but I think, I can say that or not?
No, it should.
But we have a number we need at all.
Now, where are we going to speak to?
Kara Wilbur.
Okay. Nine thirty obviously.
And then I get dial, right?
Yeah, why don't you dial, this is.
We've been having a lot of trouble.
Takes us a second.
Oh, that's all right.
For me. It is for him, it's been for me.
Oster Professional Group, this is Melanie, can I help you?
I'm Melanie, this is Ann Cormine at Lake County.
How are you?
How are you today?
I'm good, how are you doing?
Good, is Kara available?
Um, I believe so, give me just one second, I'm going to check.
Thank you.
I didn't know about this.
This is Kara. Hi Kara, it's Ann Cormine at Lake County, are you ready? How are you this morning?
I am, I'm good, thank you.
So I'm just going to turn it over to you if you're going to just start off presenting our June 30th, 17th audit, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello everybody, I'm Kara Wilbur from Oster Professional Group in Burnes. And you all have hopefully a bound copy, copy of the audit report in front of you in two letters.
Okay Kara, this is Commissioner Winters and Commissioner Shown is present. We are in a public meeting, just for the record.
Okay.
And the press is here also, just wanted to let you know Commissioner Kessler is absent today, but Shown and Winters is here.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will start with the bound copy of the audit report on Roman numeral page one. And I just have a few points that I want to point out in this audit report and interrupt me the best you can as I talk if we have questions or need clarification, otherwise I'll just carry on. This first introduction letter is the transmittal letter written by Ann and it is just a little bit of Lake County's demographics and their economics and a little bit of Lake County's financials, so if you wanted to read it, it's a good little introduction to Lake County in general. Then I'll flip to page one, the independent auditors' report. Our opinion of Lake County for the year ended June 30th, 2017 was unmodified and this is noted at the bottom of page one. The unmodified opinion is the best opinion we could give, there weren't any material misstatements that we had to address that we noticed throughout the audit, so that was a good audit opinion. And then if you flip once more to page four, is the management discussion and analysis and this is also a good four or five pages of Lake County, Lake County's financials and it has a few comparisons to prior year, if you wanted to know on a, on a kind of higher level basis how these financials and the numbers compared to 2016, this would be the place to find it. It's a good short read if you didn't want to read anything else. And then I'll flip to page 11 and 12. 11 and 12 is the statement in net position, which is the balance sheet and the statement of activities, which is the profit and loss income statement. I want to point out towards the bottom under liabilities is the net pension liability. This is a hot topic for most municipalities out there in Oregon, this has to do with your PERS liability to your current and past employees. The net pension liability for Lake County is a total of 6.1 million and this is basically what you owe in retirement to your past employees and your current employees that will be retiring and collecting PERS. Last year it was only 2.3 million and there were some court changes that increased that significantly, obviously 2.3 is 6.2 basically. And expected to go up again next year because the interest rates have changed a little bit and the discount rates have changed, so that will go up again next year. You're not going to get a bill from PERS, they just change your rates to accommodate this liability. Any questions on that? No, okay. Let's flip to page 16 and 17. This is a view of the major funds of the county, so the funds that either have the most activity or have a high cash balance. For instance, the road reserve fund doesn't have much activity, but it does have a high cash balance and therefore it's a major fund. And this just shows you the revenue, the combined general fund, that is your general fund plus a few other funds that are mostly funded with transfers, they don't have their own revenue source, no significant revenue source, their significant revenue sources transfers from other funds, so we have to combine this here. If you wanted to see, you know, these major funds, how they played out for the year, this is a good overview of how it went. So for instance, the combined general fund towards the bottom of page 16 has a net change in fund balance, it decreased to about 63,000, but it still has an available fund balance of 2.7 million at the end of the year. On page 19 and 20 are the proprietary funds. This is your airport and your railroad and your community development fund. These funds earn their own money and therefore we present them separately. So on page 20, for instance, the airport is a major fund, so it's listed here separately and then the other two are combined, it had an increase in net position of 134,000. Alright, so then I'll just point out the notes to basic financial statements on page The notes are several pages long, but if you wanted to learn more about something specific in the first 20 pages or so, this should have more information for you, I obviously read this Tuesday, but if you wanted to read more about how the funds are presented, how PERS, the GAAP-68, which includes the net pension liability, you'll find that in these notes to the basic financial statements. Okay, then I'm going to flip you clear to page 47. Starting on page 47, you will find the budget actual reports and this is the budget for the June 30th, 2017 year, it has what you originally adopted and any changes you made in the final budget column and then compared to actually what the fund had. And you'll find a budget to actual report for each fund that the county has. If you keep looking, you'll find more, but if there's a specific fund you're interested in, you can go back to the table of contents and they're all listed right there. On page 47 is just the general fund report and if you look at the top, your final budgeted amount for revenues for the general fund were 5.8 million and you received a little over 6 million. So if you wanted to know how each fund did compared to the budget, this is where to find it. Okay, so just a couple other things I want to point out is on the statistical section, clear at the end of the audit report, page 142. And this has the financial trends of the county and many of these reports are over the last 10 years, so if you wanted to know how they progressed, hopefully progressed through the county, this is a good extra information that we provide in the CAPR, which is what this report is, it's a comprehensive annual financial report and it has this 20-page statistical section in the back to provide the reader more information on the county. The last thing I want to point out and the bound copy is on page 167 and 168. This is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and since the county spent over 750,000 in federal funds, we did a separate sequel audit and this year we did it on the highway planning and construction and those funds went through the road department for some road improvements and everything was fine there, but we just have to do an extra little, well, big, but extra audit on that program and this is just a list of all your federal programs that the county has and you guys have sequel audits for years. I did want to point them out there. Any questions on the bound audit report before we go on to the letters?
I don't. No, I'm good.
Okay. So there's two letters, one should be stapled and the other one is just a one-page, I will start with a stapled letter. This is just a letter stating that we have performed our audit like we said we would. We didn't have any issues that came up with independence, we didn't have any issues with management or giving information, we didn't have any other difficulties that we encountered during the audit and this just kind of summarizes that here, we didn't have any material journal entries that needed to be made to bring the financial statements to what actually happened and we didn't have any other significant matters, banking or issues that we needed to let the court know about. So that's what that three-page letter is about. On the management letter, that's the one-page letter in front of you. The first point is on internal control policies and procedures and this is an ongoing note because of the lack of segregation of duties in the payroll and accounts payable and this has to do with your AP payroll clerk having access and the ability to sign, she prints, that she creates and prints and that she could also sign them and I believe they are actually signed with your stamp from that same person. So we just need to continue to let the court know that, or the commissioners, that this is still in place and you have the same people and if there's ever changes, you know, you need to readdress this issue and whether it continues to continue like this or if there is a better way to do it tonight, it will always be here until that happens. On capital assets, we had a great improvement over capital assets, we were able to do most of the testing during the field work, which is great because we're able to really dive in and do a better audit of the capital assets than we can do it when we're onsite and have better access to everybody and ask questions. So that was great. Other than that, we didn't have any issues that we felt needed to be reported, the audit went smoothly and Ann and the rest of the team are great to work with. I appreciate the business.
Kara Jay Collins just joined us and we won't go over all those things you said that he wasn't doing right, so.
Hi Jay.
He's smiling.
Okay, good. If you guys have any questions that come up later, please don't hesitate to call the office or email me, I will be here and I'm always here to answer questions regarding audit for, you know, regarding other things that I may be able to answer as well.
Well Kara, I'll just say, this is Dan, you know, we've worked with you folks for a number of years now and we really do appreciate your hard work and your diligence and your professionalism. You kind of touched on Ann and Jay and Nikki and all the other folks and we equally appreciate everything that they do for us because that's the reason we have such, I think, outstanding
You know, we've worked with you folks for a number of years now, and we really do appreciate your hard work and your diligence and your professionalism. You kind of touched on Ann and Jay and Nikki and all the other folks, and we equally appreciate everything that they do for us because that's the reason we have such, I think, outstanding audit outcomes is because of our folks here in the county and their due diligence to making sure things are done correctly and professionally as well.
Absolutely. You have a great team in place.
And Commissioner Winters here, I have the exact same words, but I can't thank our team enough. This, the management letter is probably one of the shortest I've seen in all my time. Just thanks to everybody that's working so hard on it. Great audit.
Very good.
And, Jay, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just, once again, I appreciate the process. I think sometimes just the word audit makes people a little bit nervous or uncomfortable, but for us, it's a learning process sometimes. We learn better and new ways of doing things, and so that information from our auditors is very useful. And then it's just a nice reassurance sometimes to understand that the processes and the policies we do have in place are doing the best we can in the public's interest. That's what we're here for. So it's a very, you know, the Oster professional group is part of our team, too. So it's all of us that work on this and every day keep making improvements. So, thank you.
Okay. And so we have this on the agenda for tomorrow to accept the audit. Carry it on for tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you, Kara. Thank you.
Thanks, Kara.
Yep, thank you very much. Have a great day.
You as well.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right. Okay. So, we'll see what we have in the agenda. We have exactly right on time, Mr. Walsh, 9:30, and it's Nick. Is it Nick?
Correct.
All right. I'll let you introduce him. I've met him one time.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce a rare student. She just came on, Nicholas Johnson. Welcome aboard, and I'm welcome to have some help.
Oh, and she did, yeah. I appreciated getting me Nick the other day, so, yeah. Welcome.
Here to talk about hopefully getting a letter from the Commissioners on designation Lake County as an opportunity zone. The opportunity zone came out of the Congressional Act, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Acts of 2017, when they reduced, you know, COVID taxes and stuff. And it came out of there. What it allows is these depressed economic areas across the nation that they designated to become an opportunity zone, and then investors with capital gains can come and invest within that area. And the law stated that, it says the exact words, is the designated leader or chief executive of the area, which means the governor for us, has 120, 90 to 120 days from December 22nd to designate 25% of those areas. So Obsidian Renewables brought this to my attention, that this would be a good fit for Lake County, and we should get to move on it because the governor's going to do that shortly. And what it allows is for investors to increase their investment by 10% in funds if they keep them in there for five years, and then it jumps to another 5% if it's by seven years, and then it's totally tax-free if they leave them in there by 10 years. So these are capital gains they've already received on large investments that they've reinvested to these areas. And it doesn't mean that they give a total tax forgiveness for all those gains before it becomes an opportunity zone. They do pay on those gains, but after that, so that extra percentage, and I'm no extra, I just hope I'm explaining this or not, but they get that in the end. And I think it has tremendous benefits here in Lake County, not just for Obsidian, which I want to say, over the, you look at what's in your planning books in the planning department and the 600 acre lots, that's going to be, I've got to look down at my page because it's huge, $1.4 billion in investments in solar in this county over the next four or five years. That's huge. And the additional, and I don't think there's anything good built out there, but if they all did, if they're in the planning department now, that's another like $6.2 million in tax benefits to this county and all the taxing districts that benefit from that. I mean, I don't think we've ever seen this, but I think also it's more important to what can it do. I'm not sure since Red Rock got their tax rebond, but it's any benefit to them or not, but it could be. But it could be another investment. And I wonder, with the geothermal resources that we know we have at Geiser and others, if that could not be the incentive for that type of investment, too. So, and then this, you know, solar doesn't create a lot of permanent jobs, but if all these go and this works, that's 300 jobs a year for over four, for about four years for all the solar to build that. And then there's going to have to be maintenance on that.
Right.
That large of an investment. Also, you've got to remember, that $6.2 million to taxing districts, that's jobs at the hospital, the schools.
It's huge.
It's huge.
It's huge.
Yeah. Nearly 78% government land like we are, as you're well-known, the other 22% pays those taxes. This is big.
This is really big. And to your point, Jim, on the solar, I had the unfortunate need to be in band last week on two different occasions because of a family situation, but in doing so, I happened to stay, my wife and I stayed at a hotel where our crew from Lakeview was up doing a huge solar project. They have gotten so good at it that they're, you know, the benefits are to our Lake County citizens, but it doesn't just have to be here in Lake County. While we're going to be, and we are the capital, they're getting to be well-known and well-respected in their abilities and stuff. Had a chance to visit with them a little bit, and they were, they could work seven days a week if they wanted to, and this is great for our local economy because they bring that money right back to you.
I want to tell you a side benefit. This is a preliminary calculation that we did. You remember, we wrote a deal on offsets from carbon climate change emissions, and we talked about abiotic, because I don't like getting into the biotic stuff. I think that gets a little ridiculous, but anyway, just from animals. But it was, you know, we could offset maybe 93%. All the things that are going on in this county, this is preliminary indication, we could offset all climate, abiotic, biotic, seven times over, and I've done it economically. I mean, what, I couldn't be at a testimony this week in Salem on cap and trade. I said I did not support or, either way, on cap and trade, I'm not an expert, it's a tax, I'm not keen on it since we can do that. But I said, what a story, and this is how I wrote the letter to the governor from us, from LCRI endorsing the opportunities, what a story to be able to tell that through opportunity zones and stuff, you can get this kind of investment that is both economically and environmentally sound. And that's a huge story to offset climate change economically. And there's other things out there such as cross laminated timber that would help the country do this also. And so that's just a side story, but it's a big story for Lake County, I think.
Well, you know, I visited with you a little bit about the cross laminated because you've been a big proponent of that for a number of years now. At the, and I didn't get a chance to share that with you, Commissioner, but at the final hearing for the tax credit, the tax-exempt public activity bonds here a week or two ago that I attended with Jeff, one of the presenters was presenting on their models and their working structures in Portland, and the committee was pretty well fascinated, and they're giving funding for that, and it is something that's very viable as we go forward.
Maybe all of Oregon State's been tore down and being built by cross laminated. Huge. And the carbon benefits of this amazing, when you look at what wood does. And that's what we're about in this county, too, is wood.
Oh, yeah.
We do those things. We can do a lot of economic good without necessarily the tax bills of some of the imposed. But anyway, so this is a tremendous opportunity, and I brought a copy of what I've written.
So where we're at, Jim, is what I'd done is I had Melanie take the board of plate one, put our logo on it, put all three commissioners' signature line on it. She had that together. I must have left mine sitting on the desk, did I see it in the packet or else you did? Put it in the packet, one or another? But we do have that. We have just, one thing I'd like to say is the census is 2016 because our population is up a little bit compared to it. I had Melanie change that, and she brought it back because the statement in there is 2016. And that's, where you'd like to keep is the 2016 census and everything, all of those numbers reflected.
I appreciate that, that you're sending. Send that to the governor. Please send a copy to that lady, too.
Yeah, I had CC and I had on James. Good.
So with that said, you're on the Regional Solutions Advisory Committee. Are you going to the governor's house on the first or on the 12th? You have an invitation to go to Mahoney at Hall if you're on the advisory committee, I believe.
I mean, I missed it. Too much of a one-armed thing. I'll double-check.
Double-check, see if you got that email. It's invitation-only for advisory committee people. It's on the regional solutions, and it's Monday, the 12th. I'm planning on being there. But it'd be an opportunity to be at the governor's house.
Well, with that said, you'd mentioned that.
I'll take that up, too.
You'd mentioned that before. Would it be appropriate, because that's next Monday, for you two to hand deliver that letter so we make sure the governor has it?
I don't know the protocol. I, what I thought is we would send it, and then I would, if I got the opportunity to talk one-on-one, because there's quite a few regional solutions committing people, so I don't know. I don't want to take the chance of not getting that opportunity.
Well, I think it's more than appropriate to mail it, as you alluded to, but I would love to see you two take a clean official copy. She'll accept it. If she just gave it the stated state address, this is what, a lot of what that address was about.
Well, I was really going to push Red Rock with my prime thing, and I'll push this also.
Yeah.
And it may be that I can't go. The reason I'm not justifying is still my family situation's going on, and I kind of stay pretty close, and so I'm going to say I'm justifying.
But I will be there. It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, it's just, you'll have it at least.
Maybe that is, we send it hard copy mail, and we back it up, an opportunity to come through. I can handle it. So let me know if you're going.
I'll double-check.
I can't remember who the email came from. I don't know if it went right past, but we looked at it.
Well, it's like I said, it could be just, yeah, I went past it because of the date and family situations.
Yeah.
But I'll relook at it and reevaluate it because what an opportunity. I thought you brought that to my attention. I hadn't thought that part. And we've gotten letters so far from Sustainable Northwest and other groups. And I sent a request, an email yesterday to Roberto at Town Hall to also try and get a letter, because I think this can be, this is a huge economic opportunity to get investment, real dollars investments. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So by consensus of the board, agree to send the letter to request the opportunity zone to the governor?
Yes.
Consensus on that? Melanie, for a minute. Jim, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
After our attention.
Thanks for all your damage.
Okay. What's that? Ronnie Lindsay has been waiting patiently.
I am a patient person.
You're going to have to speak up for me.
I am a patient person.
You are a patient person.
Hi, Ronnie.
Hi.
I'm just making myself a couple of quick notes here. I apologize.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Looking for my information. Go ahead.
Okay. So last April, when we were doing rate changes for the ordinance, anyway, we had, I did a survey of the number of the other fairgrounds and asked what they did for their bars specifically, and the fees that they charged for their bars. And generally, for the larger ones, they did cave prices and setup fees, and I mean, they were all out there. And then the smaller ones did a setup fee and a percentage of the bar. So in talking with the board, we put that into our fee requests at that time, last April, and thinking it was a good way to get a little bit of, so we only have a few larger ones that it would affect, but to get a little more revenue in for table and chair replacement and things like that. So anyway, during this time, when it came up, we've had a little pushback and input, and didn't go over real well, mostly because, you know, when they come to do a bar, they don't really make a whole lot of money anyway, was one of the arguments, et cetera. So in the board discussion, it was...
I'd like to clarify, the Fair Board.
Oh, the Fair Board, sorry. The Fair Board. We discussed it and came up, we would like to introduce these three fees that are on here, that are on your paper, as just new fees and basically not necessarily touch the bar fees again. We would eliminate that from next, when we can, in 18 months.
Yeah, every 18 months, we go through the hearing process on fees, and here in that 18 months, if you have new fees, they can be added, but you can't change.
You can't change existing fees.
So what this is, is after the Fair Board had met and discussed it, was to look at changing the fees, adding these fees as the appropriate fees for our operations.
Yeah. And so what we did basically was put it right within the facility rent, so there's no additional fee for a bar or anything like that. But basically, if you rent the facility and you have a bar, this fee exists, and it would be basically $60 more, being that that would go towards, or it would generally go towards table and chair replacement, is what that increased revenue would kind of go for.
Well, on the chairs, the $50 flat fee.
I know, I was just getting to that.
Well, you sort of molded it in there.
Oh, I did.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to stop.
So then it came up to, I had done another survey of the number of the fairgrounds, and basically, none of them just include their tables, table and chairs in facility rents. They charge extra for their tables and chairs. And so I don't think that's necessarily a good thing to do. But when they, when people were printing off the fee list, they were going, oh, my gosh, now we have all these fares, fees we have to pay for tables, chairs, extras for setup, dah dah. They just read the whole fee ordinance and thought everything applied. So most of our activities out there don't exceed 150 people. Some do, but very few of them. So the idea was to include tables and chairs for up to 150, and then anything after that, over that, would be just a flat additional $50 for chairs and tables, which would also help that table and chair replacement.
And that money for the 150-plus, the $50 would be in a fund that just goes straight back to replacement. Over half of the, so two or 300 people function out there, then we always end up with two or three chairs damaged, or this or that, with no funds to replace them. So the board, the Fair Board, said, we're acceptable to this, makes more sense. We want to attract people to come to us, but we also have to be able to maintain and keep our facility going by our chairs and tables. So the verbiage of the new fees from back in April was really misleading. Nobody read that it can also be at the discretion of the board, so they can come into the Fair Board and ask for a reduced amount or dependent on the function. But this here should clarify and make it a little bit more palatable to the people renting the fairgrounds, and still be attractive to keep that used as a community facility.
No, it makes sense. I just have one real question. I see that for the very same use, it depends on if it's, and it doesn't say what summer and winter time is.
Oh, I just didn't put them on there. Summer is April 1st through September 30th, and then October 1st through March 31st is winter.
So is the additional amount in there because you have to, I thought it was treacherous through the snow.
No, that we just apply for fun.
Kate explains the sense. Kate explains the sense. Yeah.
Yeah. So... So this will be on for tomorrow. And I do not, and I'm sorry, it's not, no, I don't think that it would be considered a hearing. I think it's just considered a fee. So...
Yeah, and I didn't know if it necessarily had to come here or not.
Yeah, it didn't, all the fees ultimately have to be approved. But would you check with legal counsel, you and Ronnie, find out if tomorrow it actually has to be a hearing? And I apologize, I didn't put any more time to this, just a procedural question, Melanie.
Okay. So Melanie, are you gonna comment?
This is new fees to our fee orders.
Correct.
I want to make sure we followed the procedure.
Okay.
Apologize to both of you, I never put the time in.
And our shop door is now, Ben, just put you on.
So I apologize for another question, I guess I, maybe this under department updates.
Department updates, go for it.
Well, just on our heating and cooling system, we're, I don't necessarily always track on what's been...
Oh, oh, the heating system from open request?
Yeah.
Oh, it's all in, it was, it's all in and done.
So is it doing the job that it's supposed to be?
Yeah. No, it really is, it's doing super well. At the Rocky Mountain El Frontition in Building Two, we just had the heat checked down that Sal comes out and does to make sure gas leaks or whatever. And something happened and it didn't turn, it didn't heat. And so James went out there, played with the deal, still didn't heat. They were kind of cold, but luckily, the door was in there, so that added a little bit of heat. Anyway, we went out there the next day and just flipped the breaker on and off and it came online. Yeah. But otherwise, it's heating up very nicely.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to get you out there and...
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know we have all these improvements going on and I, you know, and air not being enough to take a look at all these great things all the time.
So why don't you give an update on the kitchen and on the restroom, and produce department update?
Well, okay. The restroom, right now, we have the electrical final. We're just waiting for Ken to put in all the showers and toilets and sinks. Everything else is done, all the walls, FRP, dantin, heater system, everything else is in. Once that's done, then we can work on the sidewalks outside and the hand ratings, and then the bathrooms will be done. Goodness. And we ordered a coin-operated system for the showers, for the shower portions themselves. The kitchen, I'm so excited about the kitchen. Anyway, we got the new stove in and it was up and running for the Rocky Mountain Elks. We got the new hood vents. One really fun thing is, they have to replace all the walls of the FRP panels because they just can't clean them. Well, they're seeping to floor and our current cupboard system were built in place. So as they remove all these, we get all new cupboards and everything, and counters, it's awesome. Anyway, so that's, I'm just waiting for a, I know I'm so excited. I'm just waiting for a call from Mike from Rainbow because they're doing all the work. He thought it would be, he's helping for next week. And he's just trying to do it all in one week and then the kitchen will just be done. Do we talk about the groundstands, too?
Well...
That's kind of a little different thing.
Well, the only thing I'd really like to say about the groundstands is, thank you for all your hard work, working with the state fire marshal.
Oh, sure.
And having everything in place and even working and having a plan, working for the plan to get in place. I know there's some people got in the middle of what you'd already had in place, and some people have already... Anyways, you've done really good work before, went around our director.
Yeah, we are in the process of putting a plan together to use the groundstands because of the suppression, prior suppression. Anyway, and so we just have to write a plan and I'll be working with Dennis on it too, so that we pull everybody in. And basically, what we do is we get a temporary use with the monitoring system for every big function, until we can come up with some kind of solution for the...
Well, yeah, we don't even know at this point, even though this is what you've been working on, what division and what we're going to do.
That's right.
This is a, this is a Band-Aid for a situation.
That's right.
And the situation is, is wood groundstands.
Wood groundstands, yeah.
And it might, whatever plan the state fire marshal accepts, could be relatively tough or a big function to have to build. But there, it's not that the Fair Board, let's say the rodeo or the destruction derby or one of the big events, will, I believe, we haven't had the full conversation as a Fair Board, and I'm on the Fair Board, but we'll help put the plan in place. They're gonna have to have the people, because we wouldn't be able to afford to have the people that it's going to take. So this Band-Aid is a Band-Aid. We have to figure out what we're going to do when we grow up, basically.
Right.
And so that will be part of the Fair Board's work to do, is find out how we're going to long-range address a situation that's just temporarily covered right now.
Yeah, the monitoring system is basically literally having people walk up and down, one to every 200 people or 250 people, literally walking up and down the groundstands looking for sparks or fire or smoke, and having fire extinguishers placed around. But we also have to provide the name of the people who are doing that monitoring for whatever function. So it's not just, oh yeah, we'll get 10 people out there and then that'll show up. We have to have their names, and so, which I think is good, because it kind of holds them accountable.
Well, if there is a fire, there's likelihood, liability comes on, and so there's a lot of questions to be answered.
So, but it's taken care of.
So thank you for your work on that.
Oh, sure, sure. Is there anything else? Oh, we have about one week left and James will have all the lighting done, for the lighting bracket we've got.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and except for, we can't get to the big ones out in the arena because it's just a flood right out there right now. So we can't do the big tall ones. But other than that, all the buildings, all the new ones, all the groundstands, you know, the over bay ones will be done. Sail barns done, and it's a huge difference, it's incredible. If you walk in the sail barn, or in the sail barn, we've got all those done, and it's just, it's night and day, it's incredible, so.
Well, there's been a lot, 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 then, Ronnie, and your leadership. I know James does a lot of work out there at the Fair Board and support and the input that they provide. Very much appreciated, because we're definitely making that area out there that, you know, some people in the past have talked about, you know, using bulldozers and so forth. Too, very nice within our means, because that's what it's always about, is within our means. And you went out and researched and enabled to come up with methods to do things a lot less expensive, but still high-quality.
Oh, good.
So really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it, Commissioner, your work on the board. And apologize for when things come up, that people do this end run in the dark of night around y'all that have been working hard on these things. But it's nice that you persevere.
Well, and you know, every Sunday, I put on your saying, I'm on the heat.
You put on the what?
Your saying, relax today, tomorrow's Monday.
I'll do that.
Okay, are we done?
Yes, thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you, you guys.
Thanks, Ray.
Oh, I'm the only one in here, I'm thinking I had an audience. I mean, besides you, Jim.
All right, so moving right off to our agenda, we have a recommendation for a new project.
Oh, sir, what's up?
Before we do, Commissioner, if you don't mind, just to get a kind of clarification, we had Jim here, but we do have on tomorrow the memorandum, Melanie, for the LCRI, and that's...
That's on the next two.
Is it?
No, he had me take it off, he was going to do it.
That was, that was the agreement we made for that grant that I signed.
Yeah, and it's here and it's signed, I just didn't know.
We can acknowledge that, I decided that it did need to come through because we'd already made that agreement.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna take it off tomorrow?
Yeah, we can take that off tomorrow.
That's my question, I thought we had agreed on it.
Yeah, that was a, that was that memorandum agreement between Lake County and Lake County Resources Initiative for the grant.
Yep.
Two or three meetings ago.
Yep.
So the minutes can acknowledge that it has been signed. All right, so then back to the, we have that recommendation. Is it on for tomorrow, or are you just gonna take care of it today? It looks like it's not on for tomorrow, you'll just go ahead and get it, take care of it today.
Sure. I'll make a motion that my direction or by recommendation of Stacy Gani, our county clerk, that we make the appointment of Kathy Miles to our BOKDA board.
I'll second the motion, motion's been made and seconded to appoint Kathy Miles to the BOKDA board. A recommendation of clerk Stacy Gani, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Lake County Road Department recommendation, that's on for tomorrow?
Yes.
And you're bringing that one forward, I know that there's a latest meeting on Road, Master Road.
Yes, and he asked me to go ahead and share with the board his recommendation today that will, as you said, happen tomorrow. He's had a vacancy from District One for a number of months now, Kate Collins, after years and years of service, decided it was time to retire. And through the search part, advertising and everything else, it wasn't as high a priority as we'd like it to be because of all the things going on. But in this last few weeks, James Evans, who goes out on the west side, has stepped up and said, I'd like to serve on the little advisory net, District One position.
Okay, so we'll act on that tomorrow. But I have the next thing is computer purchase, Melanie has an update, want her budget, RIT budget request.
Yeah. As I'm sure you guys know, we cycle out updated computers every three to five years. I have a recommendation from Brad Brown from ACTEC to replace up to 15 computers, which will cost approximately $30,000. I have the money already budgeted, but I'd like your approval to proceed with purchasing.
And this follows our rotating plan of being able to rotate and keep the computers up so we don't get hit all at one time with a much larger building. I think we can, by consensus?
Yes, yes, by consensus.
By consensus, then if you'd like, go ahead and spend the budgeted line item for that. Next item, what are we doing, minutes today or carrying those till tomorrow? Our tomorrow agenda's getting very small. We'll carry those on till tomorrow, the minutes. Department updates, liaison updates, if there's one, do you have any this time?
Uh, maybe a few. Will, I know both of us will be at the SCOAC, SCOED meeting this Friday. I may be up on my flight Thursday, only maybe tomorrow. I've got, I'm gonna be meeting with the folks from Workforce here locally, Jeff and Ted, this afternoon, just to talk about the program, how it's going on the educational as well as the workforce side of things with the youth. Next week is our regular ALC ledge committee meetings, public plans on Monday. And I know you're gonna be in Salem, I'm not gonna go, I'll be here at the office for that. I've got a call for, I got a call this morning from Doug Giraff, who is the assistant to the state forester, and he's gonna follow up later today, but he has asked if, if, it's not appointed, but it's a Wildland Fire Caucus that he was meeting, he and others, the state were meeting with him. He had talked to our executive director of Wildland Fire Leadership Council, our national group, about this, and they want to point me kind of as the point person for the things in the west, for questions and updates, and just kind of the person that they go to, because I sit on the national committee. So I will talk to him, because I returned the call and of course, he was in meeting already, and I said, Doug, you gotta be a little bit clearer on what you're asking me to do, in which I'm more than willing to do, but I think I, I don't know if I mentioned before that the state forester had asked when I was going to be, we were trying to figure out a time now for a special trip to say when I was going to be at the bond committee meeting. I met with the state forester the day before and had quite a visit. He would like me to consider in the future, he would like me to consider now, but it's going to be in the future, a possible appointment to the State Board of Forestry for the state of Oregon. That group, it's a pretty significant group as it relates to responsibility, because it oversees, the state forester actually works for the Board of Forestry. And they oversee all the state forests, as well as all the private land forest activities. And the role they play is pretty involved with work that they themselves do, it's a very active committee. But what I shared with him is during my last year in office, I wanted to focus on the things that we're working on. I don't want to take on that additional, because it could be up to eight or nine meetings. But I said I would entertain it after January 1 of 2019. So that's where that's kind of landed for the time being, he was happy with that.
Sort of depending on the right end vote, right?
Should I talk about the Grand Sun's attorneys? No, I don't. I have a housing meeting, I'll just stay here. It's a good chunk of the afternoon next Wednesday, Valentine's Day, our climate like housing group. And just as another little heads up, I will probably be attending our next withwork meeting. It's, is going to be in early March for a couple of days. So I'll be more precise on all of that as the time gets closer, so.
Okay, thank you, most everything that I was going to say, we've already said. Monday, I will be traveling to meet with the Regional Solutions Advisory Committee and team, governor's house, by an invitation, I've only been there one other time in my time as commissioner. Kulegowski was there, I got the honor of going to Mahoney Hall then, so this is a great opportunity. The ACT and SCOAC, SCOAC and SCOED meeting is Friday in Climate Falls, we'll be at that. Tuesday, I intend on being back, railroad advisory meeting here at 2 o'clock. Would like Dan, if you're, if I'm not here or even if I am here, that should be pretty good, Toby will be here. So that, I did ask Melanie yesterday, since I got a little bit of travel coming for Breakdown on our travel, so if you haven't seen Breakdown on the travel, we still have five months left to go. Keep an eye on our travel, just to think, yours and mine seem to be pretty good at this time. I do have planned for several different things between now and July 1 on our budget. And then just myself, I'm already trying to let department heads and everybody know it's that time of year, it's budget time started, that's probably if I mention the travel, is we're not far before we go into our budget meetings. So department heads and everybody's starting to be very aware of further added our budgets. We still don't have an actual word on it, I'll wait for you and Dan to give us an update on that. It can be a huge impact on our budget this year, so. Maybe a little bit different tone during budget time this year than always. With that...
Well, before you adjourn, because you just hit on some things, Commissioner, that I think need to, not for today, be discussed more, but at least mention that we make note of them for future meetings when we're, when we're all here, if that happens. The travel, but our budgets. You know, we've just, we've been able to cover those things because of material supplies was plentiful enough, but I think from the board, we need to... to come up with some, some general agreement on how we're gonna handle this because Melanie in her first year with the budget, she takes these budgets very seriously. I, I think it's only fair that we give her some, some clearer direction because, you know, as you said, we're, we monitor those things and if we're having shortfalls, well, what do we do about it? That would've been saying we have enough in materials and supplies to cover that. Once upon a time, we still do talk about these unexpected costs or cost overruns, you might say, and I think we need to get back to that where we all see the value in what's going on, which leads me to the second part, we've all been quizzed about a calendar of such that Melanie could actually do. I think it has a lot of merit, because quite frankly, I don't know about you, Commissioner, a lot of times I don't know, I know usually all of these where you're at, but I don't know as a county where we're, each of us are at, and I think that's a good way to share, 'cause it's nice when someone walks in my office and says, we're such and such, I can look at the calendar and Melanie printed out for us and say, they're here or they're there and not just they're not.
I'm, I'm not real good at that myself, but it is a tool that's needed for not only the public, but for our department head team, for all of us, and at least a weekly calendar would be nice.
Yeah, and you know, and we all recognize, each one of us have said over the years and it happens every day, we come to work with certain things in mind that we're gonna be where we're gonna be and then we find out we have to change that because of circumstances, so.
Right.
It's just a working direct, you know, model and for us that, you know, on this computer wizardry, Melanie, I know will put that together for us if we just give her the information, so like.
Well, we started it.
Yeah.
Then we let it slide down, so.
Yeah.
That'd be great, I, I think that's a great suggestion, 'cause I will, I'm techie challenged, I will need help.
I just need your information.
She'll put it in.
Oh, you'll put it in?
Yeah, she'll put it in for all of us. And that's the beauty of it, is if we just tell her where we're planning on being for any given week, like next week, she'll put that in, print it off, we'll all have a copy of it.
Okay, I'm, I'm all in on that.
Yeah.
So you, that gives you the opportunity to chew me out when I don't do it, how's that sound? Okay, anything else, Commissioner?
Uh, I, I'm just gonna defer to Melanie right now, I'm gonna ask her, and I, I didn't preload this, so she might just, I don't know what she'll say, but is there anything else that we can do better that'll help you with what we do? I, I know that's kind of an awful current question, but we're talking about budgets, we're talking about calendars, is there anything else that comes to mind that would be helpful to you that we do?
I can't think of anything.
Why don't you think about it?
I'll think about it and think about you.
Tomorrow, if you come up with something, because we, you know, we need to respect that you have not only a job to do, but you're, you're wanting to make sure that you're in the know on things that you need to do, so, yeah, share that tomorrow if there's anything.
I think, I think the calendar would help unify us and your scheduling on point. But I think that's all right now that I could think of that would be helpful to us.
Yeah.
So going over tomorrow's agenda, which is very light, I don't know if legal counsel has any executive session stuff and, or anything, but I don't see a need for him to travel all the way here for that, for this meeting unless there's executive session. I know he hasn't been to a couple of meetings, but you see a need?
No, I, I don't. I was going to ask him. I just, I want, as you know, probably more than anyone else, and I don't wanna speak for you, Commissioner, but I was highly upset by what happened with one of our executive sessions and I've talked to Mr. Bailey about it and it is something we can talk about in a public meeting. I think our trust was, was very much violated and I want it to be clear, if I'm gonna come into executive session in the future, it better not ever happen again, so.
Deal.
Yeah, I know you feel the same way, but Mr. Bailey, I know, was going to help us address that and what we could, couldn't, couldn't do.
Okay, so with that, Melanie, touch base with Mr. Bailey and see if he has a plan for any executive session, anything that he needs to be here for. If not, we can get him on the phone if there's anything else comes up. Or that direction from our legal counsel needs to be, he needs to make sure that it's at the time that we're, full of board, full boards here.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
With that, we will adjourn at ten fifteen.